I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're getting the first slip, young guy.
So Pillar, would you read the prayer, please?
Sure. Everyone over there, thank you, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the gift of good weather. And we enjoy the sunshine and we enjoy the change of the season. We thank you for the relatively small amount of damage done with the melting and stuff this spring. And we just pray that you watch out for those people that have been affected by it in any way, shape, or form. I pray that you watch over the activities of the meeting tonight, that they may be pleasing to you and satisfying to our customers. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, we have the reading of the approval of the minutes from April 3rd and April 11th.
Motion to approve and suspend.
Second.
Motion by Hack and second by Leeder. Discussion? All in favor of those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Thank you. Approval of the agenda, please. Unless there's changes.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by Pillar. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion? All in favor of this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right, engineers report. Monty?
As stated in the notes, there really are no approvals at this point. We do have the estimate from Sletton to repair the water line going to the hydrant on First Avenue, southwest over near West Dakota Lumber. I haven't seen anything yet from CAND as far as, oh, there's no CANDs there. They didn't ask for any action on this tonight, so I'm thinking Jared will bring it up again since they will be in town for a while. CAND is a little bit higher, but they've done some decent work for us. I'd like to kind of keep that, keep that relationship going a little bit, so... But then, again, there is no need for action on this unless you want to take action tonight. That was it. They're still just tracking what's going on with Expedition Estates. There is no schedule yet. And they're still working with CNC Steel as far as scheduling when they're going to start to do the sanitary sewer.
Okay. Do you board want to take action right on that, or you want to?
We just wait on Jared, then maybe we can address the building next door as well.
Sounds good. Thank you. Everybody good with that? So I guess what's wrong, I guess with that fire hydrant?
The line to it was actually had, had a leak.
Yeah, about halfway between Main Street and the hydrant, we had water bubbling out of the street, so we're thinking that.
The hydrant is new.
The hydrant is new, but this is quite a ways away from the hydrant, so it figured it out.
Didn't we shut that off a minute ago?
We shut it off after it started leaking, yeah. Line either broke or something.
Wasn't that like right before one of those major snowstorms?
It was. Yeah, just before winter set in.
Yeah, so we just shut it off. Are they going to replace it from that break then, all the way to the hydrant?
They'll probably just put in this place if there's three bad feet or five feet or whatever, they'll just replace that section or whatever.
We just need to look at the damage and, you know, if it was a rock growing into it or something like that, that's, that's one thing. And we may, we may find when we excavate that.
Something totally different.
They just said segment or whatever.
It should be all PVC pipe down there. It should be all new stuff, but I'm kind of...
And they don't know they got to find it yet, though, right?
They'd have to find it, but they'll dig exactly where the water was squirting out of the ground. It should be pretty close to that spot.
Six eight free reduced, I'm sorry, yeah, free reduced hall rent for the gross benefit.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Leeder. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Water Sewer, report.
Water and Sewer, we've got a quote that we received from Clay's Plumbing and Heating out of New Salem, North Dakota. That is to, we, we had purchased before the backflow preventer equipment that needed, needs for all of the city buildings. And now we got the quote from Clay's Plumbing and Heating to do the actual installation, and they also do testing. So they're certified for this. And we had talked before that all of these backflow preventers, the work that needs to be done on it has to be done by a certified plumber. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to, to move forward with Clay's Plumbing and Heating out of New Salem. In the amount, their quote right now is $12,872. That's their estimate, so I'll throw that out there as a motion to approve that. We can get them on the schedule.
Okay, motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Leeder. Discussion? Casey? So then are these going to be, I guess, installed, I guess, above ground? Will they go below ground or something? Not there, all above ground.
As far as I know, they're all above the ground.
I think they'll have to be above ground. They'll all be in the building, probably really close to the meter.
So in the fire hall, that's like $5,000 bucks or something?
Yeah, that one there is, is all copper and much larger. Lions that are over there. So that one's going to be...
Three-inch copper.
That's going to be a labor of love.
And I think the velvet cell for that flowback preventer is around 200 pounds just in itself.
When we have a material cost that was significantly higher per material as well. It's a little different than the rest.
How big is that one, Dave? Should they have bought that along with the big... They're going to have to replump a bunch of stuff to get that in there, then.
It's expensive. It is what it is.
You know, you don't want stuff coming back into our good water that's sort of our super stream.
Where you can get under that water grad we already have?
No, this is, I don't think so.
It's a separate program, unfortunately.
And this is elective stuff. This isn't... Well, they're suggesting we do it, but...
There are requirements, several things. It's more than a suggestion. Because they got, they got deadlines and stuff associated with it as well.
Well, if you don't do it and you have a breach, then you've got to go on a boil alert for a week. And that comes, that's all it takes.
So then I guess what's the difference? You know, if you do it here, or else in a neighbor's place, they're going to, you know?
We, we have that.
It's installed, so...
So there's, we obviously have responsibility for this here. And then there's also a program where we are going to be going around to all of the residence homes in city limits to, to take a look at the piping in there. That's, that's lead pipe type stuff.
That's the lead, lead copper.
I can't remember if they, if they had backflow prevention type stuff that was associated with that, or if that was just lead pipe. No. This is separate from all of that. We opted to just do, there were two different ways of doing the backflow prevention, containment and something more comprehensive. We opted to do the containment at this point, which is just the city public buildings. The comprehensive is going to be coming up later where everyone will have to look at, every home will have to be looked at in business. So that's just, there's a little more time to fall into that as we go along, so... And we kind of just went with the containment at this point, hoping there would be funding in the future to look at some of that other stuff, so...
Any questions?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Pillar?
Aye.
Leeder?
Aye.
Hack?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
O'Vonell?
Aye. Motion carried.
That's all I have at this time.
I've got one thing underwater for you guys.
Yeah.
Mercer County Water Resource Board last week, Thursday, with this kind of being at our, I'll say, high watermark since the last time of the flood, kind of when the river channels started changing a little bit. We went ahead and authorized Apex Engineering to do a drone flight through Zap, Buella, and Hazen just to kind of get a sense as to where at this specific gauge level, what's that look like upstream and downstream versus the gauge station? Just to kind of give the communities a little bit more information and stuff like that based upon the flood levels and things like that. And I, I think that the Apex is planning on doing a presentation in conjunction with that at our next Water Resource Board meeting. So if any of you guys would like to sit in on it, more than welcome to. I'll just issue you guys a digital copy of that.
They did the flight last week, didn't they?
Yeah, they did the flight. I think they did half of it on Thursday and half on Friday. And so it was, the, the idea was to try and time it when it was at its highest, just so you guys had those data points.
Oh, I had a citizen that lives alone, Antelope Creek, west, or, or Huber Second. And they want to know when the city was going to be snagging back there of deadfall. And I said, that's not our, that's not our responsibility, correct? Is that the water board?
Well, we can do it potentially, or we've done it in conjunction with cities, or just the cities have taken it. But there's also some pretty significant cost share available with that. And so when we've looked at that before, I believe that the state will cover 70% of it. And then the local will cover, can cover up however they want to divvy up the expenses for the remainder of that. But yeah, if that's something, or there's a lot of trees and things like that, I think that's what we should absolutely buy this in cost share for you guys and see if we can get it accomplished there. And that drone flight might really show some of those areas.
Good. Thank you.
Oh, there's, there's a gauge box on the bridge just north of Senex. And I don't know when they take readings of that on Antelope Creek or whatever, but I've seen that box there. But it would really be nice and helpful for our city employees to know what that level is like this year by the new RV park. I mean, it came within probably an inch of coming out of its banks. And it would, it would be nice to know what that level was so we could be more prepared for Antelope Creek flooding. It's, it's a manual, manual box where he has to come and actually...
I can probably get ahold of USGS and get that information.
Yeah, because I don't know if they were there at all this year, but as high as Antelope, it would have been nice to know on that level. It's like, well, okay, when it gets to this level, we're still safe, but if it goes over that, you know, we'd probably have a little trouble in Ditches and maybe by the new RV park or whatever. It would just be nice to have some of that data or whatever for future, future years.
And they were suggesting over in Buella, when I went down my haircut today, of course, that's haircut conversation, or burger shop conversation. But they said, the rumor over there was that had they had one order in that succession of the temperatures, that would have probably put the water over the driveway onto the golf course over there and stuff like that. And as it was, the softball fields and stuff were all underwater. It was pretty significant, but the way it all worked out with the, with the melting and stuff was fairly decent in the grand scheme of things.
Definitely on the razor's edge, though.
Yes.
Any more discussion of the water?
That's all I got.
Thanks, Dan. Streets?
We've been out sweeping. Of course, we're going to have more to breathe than normal, of course. Dave got me a note here on the 1445 John Deere Moore. It's the older of the two. It's not the rear discharge. It's a side discharge one. I had a little trouble with it. Injecting a little at you.
They had a steel injector issues. They were going to fully injectors, test them, replace it needed. They can't get the injectors out of the cylinder head, so the only way to get it out is to pull the cylinder head and push it off from the inside. That's what's taking the estimate or the build so high. But to keep using the machine, we don't have a lot of choice.
Just to give you an idea, 2016 is when we bought our rear discharge, and at that time it's 24 or 25. So I didn't think it was that old, but I'm going to make a recommendation that we go on this route. It's a way cheaper fix. The cost of $3,000. And that, that will be done out with Ardo.
Ardo, yes.
Yes, just to do the injectors?
Just to do the injectors and get it running decent. It doesn't use any oil. I mean, it's been a good running machine. Mechanically, it's, it's a pretty sound machine, yet it'll, it'll definitely make this season, then even another season if we decide not to treat it.
It does have $3,000 approximately what Dave's got written here, so possibility in the future to start looking at going, but do, obviously it's probably more expensive than 24 or 25. Right for right now, I'd like to see us go this route.
Okay. Motion by Hack to spend...
$3,000.
The estimate, $3,000 to repair the Jake John Deere. Second by Pillar. Discussion? Roll call.
Hack?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Leeder?
Aye.
O'Vonell?
Aye.
Motion carried. What else go out of Streets?
Pretty much I've every street in town swept at least once, and it was, we did a lot of sanding this winter with the snowfalls, so we're still, still sweeping. I'm kind of hoping or predicting a little rain yet this week, possibly a little bit of snow. I'm kind of hoping next week we'll probably be pretty much ready to practice, you know?
Do we have any rocks left?
I think so.
I did get word from Monty that Tandis is going to be a little rising when it was out of yield tomorrow. So hopefully get all the issues at hand.
Where are they, where, I know they're working up on, on that curve up by Murray's where the water tower rode. What else are they going to be doing?
Well, they'll be starting on the water line up to Old Plant, and we'll try to get a price from them for dressing up the road up to Ishland. There's a lot of huge big potholes and stuff in there, way more than what our box blade can handle.
That first probably quarter, I would say.
Yeah, a little bit way up at the top. So I talked to Angelo this morning, and when we get to town tomorrow, we'll probably drive up there and see if we can get a dollar or more.
Showing that man whole cover right away?
Yep, yeah, there's like six or eight of them up there. We could hold product and have them spread it for us, or try to cut some of them potholes out of there. And then it will be good for the summer, then we can maintain it after that. Let's see what kind of price they give us.
I agree with Dave. I mean, we're beyond trying to cut those with their box blade, I think.
Yeah, that's...
I don't even think if we dumped a ton of water on there, I don't think we could do it. Most of it, as much as that's going to...
Okay. Anything else?
It's all way up at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, finance, busing, library. Police, fire, forestry. Forestry coming up fast.
Did talk to Mike today. He's got nothing with forestry yet. Still no word on that bucket truck we've been watching for. So the refriger must not have their new one yet. Let us know. Police, we did have one applicant for that position, so I'd like to make a motion to put Samantha on at 90% pay for the first year.
Do we forego interviews then, Monty, if we have one applicant?
She's already in her void, you know, interviewing her.
Yeah, so I did call Monty on that. I'm okay with not interviewing. And Jim said that's fine, too, since she's already worked for us. If it was somebody new, obviously we didn't still interview her. She's technically still an employee.
Okay. When would she start? She'd have to do the...
We got to have some preliminary testing and stuff, so hopefully by the end of the week.
Okay.
I'll second that.
With a motion by Leeder, second by Pillar. Discussion?
I, I have a feeling we're going to have some people come talk to us about husband and wife working for the same police department.
It's happened before.
Yeah. Figured I'd bring that up. They seem to be both okay with it. Jim's okay with it. On the way we operate our force, you know, they're on at different times and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's unique issues that could happen with vacations and enlistments and things like that, but it's usually in small towns.
Yeah.
Okay, we have motion, a second, any more discussion? You're done. Roll call.
Leeder?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Hack?
Hi.
Stern?
Aye.
O'Vonell?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Then we also, that expedition we have is down at ID4. When Tony was taking it down to Bismarck to get the graphics put on it, I guess he made it approximately halfway to New Salem and then said that rear end felt like it was on ice the entire rest of the way. They could hardly keep it on the road by the sounds of it. So he stopped in at New Salem, had a mechanic look at it there. And from what Jim told me is they said it looks like the whole rear end was cobbled together. I, I don't know. Jim also did say that they sprayed some goo on it to make it stop squeaking by the looks of it, but I don't know. So they ended up taking it to ID. It would have been last week, Monday, if I remember right. They still haven't got to it as of today. So I did call Terry up after that. Terry's like, well, he said Hazen Motors were on it and it should still be under warranty. He had to get with Brandon, talk to him about it. He just got back to me the day it was not Hazen Motors. It was Ignite Tire that did it, worked on it.
On the rear end?
On the rear end, yeah. So I did call Ignite, and they put a rebuilt differential in it. It's got a independent rear suspension in it. So they've put a rebuilt differential, and it is still under warranty. So he said, if that is the problem, we're supposed to let him know and he'll get the paperwork to ID to get it in for warranty.
Those don't work at ID?
Sounded like it, yet ID would still do the work. And they could just transfer the paperwork for the warranty. We're in limbo mode until ID can get it in. They were going to try to squeeze it in last week, but I guess they couldn't squeeze it in for some reason to get a look at it, but...
So is it physically up there then, or is it back in town?
No, it's physically at ID. I wish you would have brought it back to Hazen instead of kept going to ID, but at the same time, it might be sitting over here at Hazen Motors doing the same thing, waiting to get in, too. So it's there. Graphics still aren't put on. Waiting for the vehicle to get fixed so they can put the graphics on it. Once they get the vehicle fixed, they'll get it right over to the graphics place. They'll put the graphics on, and then we'll pick it up from there by the sound of it. So we're going to let you guys know that. And I don't have much information on it yet, you know. I do know through Midco, we won't let that guy in New Salem work on our stuff on their oil changes anymore. So I don't exactly understand what he's saying, you know. So we'll just wait till ID.
Okay. Sounds good.
That's all I got.
Thanks. Buster?
All right, so we did get our, a draft back of the Partners in Planning grant. I did send it out to your focus group for a first look at it. And what I'm going to be doing is I'm going to, I asked the consultant about sending us that information in a spreadsheet, spreadsheet format, which it hadn't come in, and that I saw came in late this afternoon. And so I'm going to work on a blueprint in terms of a focus timeline, in terms of, you know, we're going to look at those, validate the recommendations is my intent with the focus group and whoever else might like to be there. Set some timelines. Who's going to be responsible for that, the item, that type of thing? And then possibly if there's a, try to fix a dollar amount, if we can do that to some of the recommendations in terms of where things are at. So we'll, the idea is, is I think if we get it laid out in a spreadsheet and put some timelines on it, you know, there'll be some short-term types of things that we're going to be looking at, probably midterm, and then probably some long-range kinds of things. So I think that will be a, a good, a good format in terms of where we want to go with it. The other thing, any questions on that piece of it? No? Okay. The other thing, and Mr., Mr. Owen and I were at a McEd meeting the other day, last weekend. He can chime in on this. We did talk about the fact that as of right now, Talon hasn't acquired Key Land for their, for their project. So that, that piece is still kind of up in the air, Talon Metals. And once, once that materializes, then of course, then it's a matter of them, you know, getting in touch with planning and zoning and all those other kinds of things. So that, that piece is going to be a little ways out there yet, not as, not as quickly as I had anticipated. I thought we'd be, they'd be ready to do something probably this spring or early summer. And so we'll see, we'll see what happens with that. Another kind of, a bit of a, I'll just say potentially issue that was brought up that was a little contentious, could, seemed like it might have been a little contentious, was in the past, McEd used to charge dues, okay? And it's been at least 10 years since they've had, since they've built entities that are part of the McEd group, any membership fees and those kinds of things, okay? And because of some of the projects that we're looking at, possibly coming into Mercer County and the need to have a little bigger bankroll than what we have been probably operating in the past, we thought it would be wise to reinstitute some dues for our, for our members. And, you know, we had an old guideline that we found back in, I believe it was, you know, I don't know, I think it was '04, '05 or something like that. And so I just took a stab at trying to adjust for inflation and those kinds of things. They put a number on what we thought today's, you know, an equitable amount, for instance, might be for a dues, for a dues structure, for instance. So I can tell you that hypothetically, okay? When I first came on the board, we always had in our budget $3,500 for dues for McEd. Okay? I'm saying my, my group, my, my Hazen Community Development Group. But I never received an invoice for anything, ever. I carried it on the books for five years, and because I wasn't getting an invoice, I just took it off. Okay? Well, back originally on the original list, those dues actually came in at about $2,000 or something. So I just took that old number and put a number behind ours and estimated that, you know, with inflation or whatever, $3,500 to me didn't seem like that would be on the line, okay? And to just give you, the other, the flip side of it is this. It's last year, we actually paid $5,000. My group paid $5,000 in dues to McEd so that we could help offset the cost of those grant writers that we had hired, okay? And Buella did the same thing. But there were some representatives that represent McEd that kind of were concerned about, one, Mike, now I could, I could attest to this a little bit. One concern was possibly about the timing of it, that it's not in budgets, you know, maybe we need to wait till... Maybe we need to wait till new budgets or whatever, you know, and those kinds of things. And I said, that's fine, but I said, you know, I tried to lighten them up a little bit by indicating that I never sent my dues stuff out until after our annual meeting, and that was in February. And some of these same entities have come through with their fees for my organization, okay? So I'm not exactly certain, you know, what's going to happen down the road. If it were to be adopted as it was presented, the total dues that we would be collecting would be about thirty-five thousand dollars, okay? And so one of the things that, there have been times that we have been asked over the years to participate in flex pace programming, okay? For entities that are out in the county, not in Hazen proper or Beulah proper. And a couple of times, there has been one that has been granted in the past. There was another one that wasn't granted because we didn't have dollars to do it. So those are the kinds of things that we had talked about that we would look at trying to use some of our dollars for. And those kinds of things, you know, so, so I'm not exactly certain what's going to happen with with all of that. We're going to continue to try to pursue it. And you know how it is, when you're a president or a vice president, and this to me is a little bit irritating, but who gets stuck doing it? You know, we're gonna be the ones sending the invoices out and writing the letters and doing those kinds of things. And, I mean, and we'll do it for the good of the, the organization. But interestingly enough, we had some small town mayors there, and they seemed just fine with it, you know? But it was, most of our, some of our resistance really was coming more from industry, which to me was just killing me. I'm telling you, it was killing me. And I just, I don't know. But anyway, it is, it is what it is, and we'll, we'll try to deal with it. And Jerry, you can take over.
Well, you've covered it pretty well, Buster, but more important is we've spent money on the passes feasibility studies. And whenever you do a feasibility study, you're spending about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to do that. And last time we did that was probably the thousand fifteen maybe or for the. So, you know, those are, it's crazy how much money it costs to do a grant writing or a feasibility study or any of that stuff if you wanna. So that's, we'll stay tuned for a moment here.
Yeah, basically, that's what it is. We'll stay tuned to see what happens, you know? And hopefully it'll all shake out in the wash, I don't know. But, you know, part of it is this, is, and the other thing is that I will just share with you. They did approve a flex pace agreement for a new business coming into Mercer County. And so that's, that's a good deal.
Okay, thanks Buster.
Yeah.
All right, moving down to twelve eight. Certification and assurances for two thousand twenty-four grant, transit grant. Monty, what do you got for us?
These are annual certification cert, assurances sent out by the Transit Administration for our transit program. There's different categories, lobbying or prohibition on lobbying and those types of things by America. I'll go through these, Peg and I will mark this up. We'll have Hack to mark, review it because there's a portion for the attorney to complete at the end of the document. Again, it's an annual thing. They just got the new ones out for the two thousand twenty-four grant. So, and like you say, there's different categories that we have to agree we don't do lobbying or tax liability and felony convictions, those sorts of things. So like I said, we'll mark this up with Peg as we have in the past. I don't see any changes as far as that goes. And then we'll have legal counsel review it and sign off on it.
No action tonight, though?
I prefer that you do pending review by the legal counsel because they are looking toward those grants real soon.
So your motion would be to, once, once completely modified as appropriate and approved by our legal counsel, that we would submit it.
Correct.
That's my motion.
Aye.
Second.
Motion by Pillar and a second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Weeder.
Aye.
Obedower.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, down to thirteen, public comments. Nobody here receiving? Daniel? Okay, approval of the bills. Just have a couple extras here.
Motion approved.
A motion by Hack. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the bills to be paid, say aye. I'm sorry, it's a roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Aye.
Obedower.
Aye.
Motion carried. May adjourn. Thank you.